Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of North Fond du Lac to order. And I would like to start with a table call. Yes?
Hi.
Here. The board is in full attendance, and please don't make the clerk yell. All right, report on public notice, please.
Thank you, President. Public notices were posted Friday, January 24th at Marine Credit Union, the Village of North Fond du Lac Municipal Building and District Office. And they were also sent to the Fond du Lac reporter, KFIZ 107.1, The Bull, and also Sunny 97.7, FL News, that same date, Friday, January 24th, 2020.
All right, thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. This is the last meeting where the student members packet, and if you have had a chance to read those, your directions are here. They were published. Three eight months, they will stand approved as presented. Oh, it's written.
All right, our cash balance on December 16th was $250,669.55. Our receipt through today totaled $2,663,107.16. We had a transfer of $500,000 from investment accounts, a transfer from risk for $145.55, and a transfer from LGIP construction for $49,904.79 for a total received of $3,463,891.5. Our expenditures through today were $1,737,058.28, leaving us with a cash balance on hand of $1,726,832.77. Our bills to be approved tonight are pretty good checks for $1,095,655.22, and our board meeting checks total of $346,010.10 for our total bills to be approved of $1,441,675.32.
All right, thank you very much. The board, pleasure on approval necessary for the $1,441,675.32.
I'll make motion to pay the bills as presented.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All right, I forgot to ask if there was any questions in the financial information that was sent out to the board, if there were any questions about the notice that we're reporting.
Could I just ask, Maria, could you just explain quick what the WISC and LGIP have given context, since we don't see this very much? You probably don't see much from now on, but just.
Yeah, because this one, that was the balance in our referendum account, so that was just transferred over to us. Now it will be zero, so we won't see that anymore. And the LGIP construction line is the $825,000 that we borrowed just recently, so that so whenever we spend money out of our regular fund account, because we care about just our funds, then we transfer that amount of the LGIP to reimburse ourselves.
How much money do we have left in that to do referendums projects?
Just under $200,000.
Any other questions? See that man, a roll call, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, what he cares. Do you want my cast? Would you like me to present? Yes, so we have some correspondence that's come into the board. A card from Debbie Nett's.
Oh, sir, retirement.
For her retirement, appreciate it. And also the empty bowls committee has sent a thank you for making the donation of those in those events.
That's Jim Sturman's.
And the Ken Debo family, thank you for your donation in memory of Ken's dad who passed away.
And by the way, Ken comes from a family of ten children. His second oldest brother, his oldest brother, second oldest child, twelve kids in the family. Yeah. Debo family's huge.
And then finally, thank you for the gift of money that will be put to the memory for Sarah Wallace in the name of life's sake. And?
So the nice thing about that community church is that Adam, the reverend there, or the leader, the pastor, they pray for people, and they pray for us. So that's nice.
Okay, yes.
So that's that church that's right on 23 past yards.
And then finally, counting our blessings 2019, the Elks sent this thank you note to the board. Reported that FLC adopted 120 children ages two weeks to 17 years age before the holiday.
They added three more after taking that picture. They wanted me to make sure you did that.
Good. Any donations? No. All right, so that's correspondence on the clerk's report. Next on the agenda, IMH, the much anticipated Student Council report.
All right, so I'll start off with Student Council, and it was kind of a big month. This is when we put on our big fundraiser. So Student Council hosted our two biggest events of the year in January. We held our annual pick-out game on the 17th of January against St. Mary's Springs, and this event was done to raise money for breast cancer research. All the proceeds from the 50-50 raffle, our dash for cash at halftime, and the basketball team's cake raffle went to the Susan G. Coleman group to further their research. We were able to raise approximately $380 at this event. And then Student Council also hosted our winter dance. This year we called it Snowball, and it was very successful. It was on January 18th, and we had approximately 190 students in attendance. And next up is our annual Valentine's Carnation Sale. For Key Club, our induction ceremony is going to be tomorrow for new members, and it'll be after school. The students who are new inductees will receive their official welcome to Key Club and their member certificate. And then Key Club members are also selling Battle on Bago tickets to help support Oreo Nation, and we will be sponsoring the Valentine Donut Sale on February 11th to support Lil Foo charities. And then lastly, for NHS, the annual NHS banquet has been set for Sunday, April 19th this year, and as soon as first semester grades are finalized, we'll begin inviting new members for next year. And at Key Club, NHS and Student Council continue to support Oreo Nation during basketball games and different events at school by selling the 50-50 raffle tickets and the wing-fling raffle tickets at different events. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Could I, hey Mike, could you really quickly share what best sales doing for raising money and getting kids actively involved in trying to help a cause?
We are holding a two-week-long raffle with a decent ticket to raise money for the actors to try to, you know, tame or like put out the fighters in Australia. So three together, who's Greg, Ryan Key, and several sixth and just several teachers met together to start this fundraiser, and the kids are excited, and it's going to be two weeks of helping others in the international community, so yeah.
So who is, who's given the opportunity to buy the raffle prizes?
Students.
It could be anyone, but do it for students.
I know that at least two of the board members at Keyovers were requesting to consider donations to the raffle, so.
And let me look quickly back to the open prices here. We have a stuffed kangaroo, a one-month family membership at the Fund Raffleshay. That's one price. The other price is stuffed kangaroo for $25 certificate, basically, a stuffed platypus and a $20 poco piece of disc current, or I think it says five?
Yeah.
Yeah, five, thank you. And koala, cool custard treats, a stuffed koala, $10 cobras, one scoop disc current, $5 there to meet this certificate. And then we got recreation time, Australian culling book, four movie packs of Christmas tickets to the Oreo Theater, two popcorns, two orders, $20 dress piece of disc current, three eatings piece of disc current for 12 eatings on top of pizza. The Oreo outfitters, Australian culling book, a $5 certificate for the outfitters, a $10 certificate for the food bar, Doc Cafe, and then the final one is Australian colt strip, two packs of tin, tin, not, tin-tans, tin-tans, right, two reusable metal straws, one then move out, two great toothbrush, and two reusable grocery bags, so those are the prices.
Mike, can I just ask when you need those by, because I forgot to bring them tonight?
Um, I would ask just Gavin, but I would say if you need by home.
All right, I'll give them to you.
No rush. No rush, yes.
Yes. Yeah. All right, very good.
And with that, when we do fundraisers like that, those are few, but far between because of Oreo Nation collecting donations, we don't want to hit the same groups, but the idea is that to get kids focusing, to have that money go to specific costs, so the work within the parameters, and just really glad that it tried to teach our students how to be giving and talking.
All right. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, citizens input. This is an opportunity for anyone who's in the audience that wishes to address the board on any topics that they wish to have the board consider. Now would be a time to speak up. Hearing from anyone, then I will declare the citizens input meeting, of course, with the meeting closed at 7:30. Bring it up to item J, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. So we don't have a whole bunch, a pretty light agenda tonight, but what I want to do is we have Meg Putty and Tiffany Dolan that are going to be here to give a Trafford Way update, and just kind of before they go in, I want to thank Meg for, you know, being that liaison with the administration and with the school district, making things work. It's been a huge success. Just like today, I was talking with Tim Williams, and he just said, I can't believe that we have this going. You know, when you sit back and you look, it's just what you, Tiffany, and Maggie and your team have been able to do to show that when you look at doing things differently for kids and presenting information in a different way, it's amazing. So and then I'm also very excited that Tiffany is going to get her administrative degree, and we're going to be looking, as we look at personnel and staffing, that in time Tiffany will become the principal that Chris is currently filling in and helping support for the Trafford Way. So great job on that, and a lot of extra work, but thanks for doing that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Meg and their report, and they're going to give me some information about some open enrollment things that we will also take consideration as we do ours in section K of our agenda.
Thank you.
And then before we go, Gabby, you gotta get going?
Always. So thank you, and really the partnerships with everybody has been great. We really do sit back and go, wow, we're midway through our first year, and it's going quite well. So Tiffany want to share a bit about what our students have been?
All school, we're studying space right now, so all of our students K6, and they have different emphases, and we are planning our first full school field trip to the Barrow Planetary coming up February 7th, so we're prepared for that right now.
And then, you know, on the governance board side, we've added one governance board member, so that's been really great, Pete Dillon, who is an executive over at Friday and has a student in our school, so it's really great to have a parent perspective on our board now, so we're up to seven board members, working very hard. We've been working on how can we better communicate to you guys our progress and goals for each year, and so we're working very closely with some charter schools, organizations, and advisors to better develop our ongoing goals, not what we made through our first year, mid-year. So we had our major performance goals that Tiffany worked very hard alongside the team and the governance board to report back to the charter grant committee that granted us this wonderful award to do what we're doing. We're really happy on all four measures that we've made progress so far this year, so we're just having a major report. But most important, I feel, is our, or one of the most important measures that we talked about at our board meeting is our parent survey results. Really real us out of the water. We expected some really good results, we have great relationships with our parents, but being so new, it's hard to really know what we're going to get from the survey. Our parents midway through the year, and just wanted to share a few of those things with you guys today before our formal end of the year, our formal centers are completed. So so far, halfway through the year, 95.7% of our respondents feel that we are fostering their child's social emotional skills, which is a huge part of the Trafford approach. We've got some really good comments, too, I can read a few, but I won't keep you all night, I'd read them all, because it's a short wait for the exception on like fostering their child's development of academic skills, and 95.7% of our parents felt that we were, they were very satisfied with that so far. And then our third question really would set that, you know, early educational career, our development leading us to careers, because that's our goal, is to continue to expand over the years so that we have a K-12 school that leads to college and career readiness. And rating out 87% of our parents feel that our curriculum is developing career and college skills. The comments were really great in all of them, even the comments, you know, that was one of the 4.3% that's not feeling, but they were really led to great conversations with parents, we had a few follow-up meetings. Most of those who aren't recording are not feeling we're fostering a career in college readiness, it seems that they're kindergarteners, first graders, and they put this with that a couple of times. But we're really proud of that connection that we made with our families, and so we're really working hard on how will we continue to have such a strong connection with families as we continue to grow. Forty students is a smaller number than the other district schools have, which is the neighborhood to do this, and so we're just looking forward to get to the ground and figure out how we can do that as we continue. Speaking of that, we are, make sure I don't say anything, we are currently in our enrollment period, so our application process is open for families who have students who may be interested in the 2020, 2021 school year, and so that will be open until February 8th in all online applications, so thefordway.com is where you can find out more information for that. As we share that time, we'll be opening up five additional seats or an enrollment of 45 students if we happen to have those students leave us after the first year. The board voted this evening, our governance board, on where those seats will fall. One of our missions is to really work on better distribution where our students fall in all of the grade levels. We are adding seventh grade, sixth grade is one of our highest in hold classes right now, so we're anticipating most of those students will stay. So we voted to open five kindergarten seats for the next school year to kind of fill that enrollment gap. Of course, we have students leave, that means that other grades may have openings as well, depending on how it all falls. In relation to that open enrollment, we were very thankful that last year you guys allowed open enrollment into our school so that we could fill that initial four seats. We did that with these, with 40 on the day that we would have had to pull the lottery. Our waitlist didn't grow to about 26 before we dissolved it in September. This year, with our five open seats, we currently have 17 that have already processed their application for enrollment, and still, you know, until February 8th to continue to accept them. So we are anticipating that we'll be holding a lottery this year. With those kindergarten seats, we're really hopeful that there will be a consideration for some open enrollment, pending that the North Fond du Lac students don't fill all of those slots. We have had a lot of conversations with their families, and we have two siblings that are kindergartners that are hoping to stay with their families and enroll their students because their older siblings have been doing so well in our school, and our commitment is that family connection, so we're hoping that you guys will consider some open enrollment seats for the kindergartners.
So that would all work is you're a school district student first before you go to a school, so in kindergarten, so currently right now with the Trafford Way, they're opening up those five just so that we continue moving on the same space, not getting more space, same area. We're talking a little bit about staffing, there's some new ones that I'm going to talk about, but the reality of it is that those five kindergarten seats, and there's five students from the school district or Fond du Lac that apply, that caught by during. So then it's just if they're not, then next, after that, it's open enrollment, and it's lottery, but before that, I mean, one thing, what can you do for them, those we look at are open enrollment, that siblings have preference by state law also, so that's all.
By our governance board bylaws, we have that siblings have preferences.
And it's state also, so.
Yeah, so that would just be our hope that we can continue to have that consideration as our families continue to come back to us.
Now, if they're in the Trafford Way, and they're open enrollment, then they decide move, that doesn't mean they get to move back to front seat, then they would go back to the school district.
Yeah, so last year, I think how we had done it is we had decided how many seats per grade we're opening over at that major. But yes, and looking at our current numbers, you know, Gabby, we still have the application open. Right now, we have four kindergarten students on the list, two which are follow-ups for the district, and two which are help district. With the other news, I think that might cover most of it, I think that's all of it for us, yeah. Oh, I should share, Erin and Dr. Trafford will be honored in a couple of weeks, the day of our lottery, of course, so we're going to have the Canadian last seats out by the community greater Fond du Lac with the Cheated Designer Award, which honors collaboration among community members, so we're really proud of that, and that's because of all of you guys, the school district supporting us, and the work of Dr. Trafford, so we're really excited to be there and support and fight for it. Thank you. Any questions?
I have just one. What is the application, I'm on the website now. How do people apply?
If you go to the homepage, there'll be more information, and if you click down, there's a link to our application.
I just want to just sort of look like, I can't find it.
Oh, that's not good.
I'm on the homepage. See update on enrollment?
Yep. There you go. Did it just say that we wanted, I don't know if we're considering updating it right after our meeting? Oh, it's right there. So it didn't need to update, but we are adding everything to the high seats.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to check out the application. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Testing my skills here.
If an application comes in for me.
It's been a lot of fun. A lot of work, but a lot of time.
All right, well, thank you guys very much. Move on to the U.S. State Board of Education convention. We were able to go down, and Steve was there all three days, and the call was able to be there for two, along with Pete was there for two also. So and then Sean, you got caught up with Spotlight colleague board for getting certified and needing your job.
I'm still producing safe food.
Excellent, excellent. So we're able to go down, and what I'll do at this time, there's a lot of information, a lot of opportunities to learn, really great speakers, and I'll turn it over to Steve, Paula, and Pete, just give a couple highlights.
Sure, I'll start. Overall, I thought it was a very good conference. You get a chance to kind of renew, recharge, learn, be motivated as a board member, see a lot of new faces, a lot of people that we've worked with, have seen in the past there. One thing I want to point out, and I always say this because it affects the next thing I'm going to say, it's my 25th consecutive convention that I went to, and the Boy Memorial Jazz Band, oh god, there's three general sessions, and there's a school musical group invited, and you have to apply, and they played at the start of it for usually about 15 minutes.
We went one eight years ago.
Yes, we were there. So it's a pretty big deal to get accepted to go, so you can imagine everybody's good. But so that, we're three a year, that's 75 different groups that I've seen, and this Boy Memorial Jazz Band, without question, was the best that I can recall ever, ever hearing, they were just outstanding, and they, after this, they're going on to the event in New York City, and I think it's the summer where they're going to participate in the Duke Ellington Jazz Competition, which they've done, I think, eight years out of the last 12, they've been able to go over that, so that was really good to see that. So I think the keynote speakers were very good, very inspiring. The breakout sessions, I enjoyed. Just real briefly, I went to a couple that I thought were pretty important and was pretty amazed by. The first one was about vaping, which is becoming a major issue with the society and with their kids. There was a DPI rep and then a rep from the Catch My Breath organization, who they've kind of worked into vaping issue now. They get funding from the CBS Pharmacy Foundation, and they do a lot of vaping education programs, and they have a series, I sent stuff today to the principals just to, as an FYI, to look at, and I did learn from Ms. Miguel Freeman that last, was it last year, we did have somebody from CBS, CBS Foundation come in and speak, the seniors, the curriculum really goes from fifth grade up in two-year chances, there's three different ones, and one of the things, the important points about it is the fifth and sixth years, that catch them now and tell them how unsafe this is before they start getting romanced by the ads and by all their kids doing it, and parents doing it, so. The use is skyrocketing, one of the problems is it's undetectable. Somebody who smokes, you smell it out of the clothes, you smell it out of your breath, smell it out of their vehicles when you open the door, but it's pretty much undetectable. Traditional methods that are used to curb and educate on tobacco, that don't really work with this, and one of the biggest problems is that the long-term slide we've had in tobacco use by what teens and adults is starting to turn up with the added of the vaping phenomenon that's going on now, so. One of the biggest problems is there's unknown chemicals in the cartridges that are not regulated, although there's some start to trying to do that. One thing that was mentioned is some kids are even crushing Smarties into powder and putting it in, they make your own cartridges and vaping that stuff. They tend to go on the tobacco use, they can do it right in the classroom, a lot of them using instruments, I forget what they're called, but their, kids can do it right in the classroom, the teacher turns towards the board, and they disguise them as flash drives or pens and things like that, and then there's smokeless type that they won't be able to notice. I think I found was interesting, the bathrooms have all kind of become, have a nickname of the jewel mom, because if you hear that term mentioned, that's kind of cool, I'll just say that. There's some new detector, vaping detectors coming out, there's no detectors, but they're not really working all that well, it's just kind of a first attempt. So anyway, the Cease the Ten has a vaping tool kit also that you can get, but the Catch My Breath thing is free, there are different levels, but it's free, different curriculum, and they're addressed in, you know, the staff recommend taking a look at that, so. The other one I found very interesting was a thing about Generation Z, the kids who were born between 1995 and 2010, who are now 10 to 25 years old, that is not, I found out, Abby, you want to know? I had a PowerPoint on that, too, and I. I had a PowerPoint on that too, and if I can, I'll just send that along to you guys just for, I'm sure as educators, you've got a lot of information about. But the key point was how different Generation Z kids are from even previous generation and Different difference and then which is going to require a different way of teaching those kids sometimes in a lot of cases. So again, I won't go through all of it, but just some of the key points I pulled up. They're all digital native, they never went online when there wasn't a society that was connected to a world digitally, to whatever means, the internet, devices. They've lived through some very negative experiences such as 9/11, the recession, political distrust and security breaches and online things. So there's a lot less of trust that things are going to be good in the future for that. My baby boomer generation, it used to be pretty clear, you went to school, you got a degree, or you went to college, you got a job, you work and you have retirement waiting for you at the end of life and everything is good, but they don't have that trust. This generation doesn't have that trust that all those things are going to work for them. There's no givens. They feel they need to take care of themselves, they'll take advice and accept other help, but you know, deep down, it's up to them to be successful. Employment is a very important thing and then probably the most interesting point is they want their parents around, they want them to be mentors, not helicopter parents, but all their co-pilots. They're when I need you, when I need to ask questions, but otherwise, don't tell me what to do. So anyway, they want, no one, nothing in education, they want more ongoing feedback versus a substantive evaluation of what they're doing in schools. Am I doing this right? They also want to feel safe in school and their institutions and they want to see supportive mental health issues as they're seeing it all around them or with themselves. Finally, that just for educators to know, know the audience, know what these kids are like and try to teach. Teach around that, teach with that, instead of at them, teach with them. And finally, teach that mistakes are a learning experience and not a failure. You're going through those mistakes. Anyway, but the school law update was one I always like to do, nothing too dramatic. There, one thing I guess that is interesting, chance to fire tornado drills and now two more kids apparently, the legislature thought, and I'm sure there was, that kids can't handle the surprise of, you know, the buzzer going off all of a sudden and everybody getting up and leaving. So if you desire schools to do that. Pete, I know it was in the CyberTech forum with me, it was about protecting your networks and stuff, and about every third word I had, never heard in my life before, that's what I can get a whole lot out of that. It was mainstream, you know, stuff I don't understand yet, but it's for big organizations. And then the one that you've all been waiting for, the delegate assembly this year, that went pretty well as we had talked about. Everything was all accepted except for one resolution. Wasn't a lot of the usual discussions and amendments and amendments to amendments and getting everybody confused. The only one that was voted down and it hit the newspaper right away, of course, and that was one about the Native American mascots, the lobbying. The resolution was to create the lobby policy that the WSB would lobby the legislature for a law that would require all districts in the state to not have Indian mascots as their, or any type of Indian heritage or that kind of thing. There's a lot of discussion on that. There was reading of letters from delegates from districts where the local tribe had given them permission or given their blessing to use Indian, beginning, I guess, one of them was Michigan, because their logo or their mascot honors a local chief from years past. But what it came down to really for the delegates was the idea that it was a state law. Historically, the WSB has always been about pushing local control, letting school districts decide this stuff, not all state mandates. And I think there's only 37 districts left that have that mascot that falls into this category and I think the overall, the prevailing feeling was that we really want to be, if you have local control, that we really want to be telling other districts that have Indian mascots what to do. So I voted, I voted no. I mean, I voted yes, I voted yes, it was close because of that local control, but there's still that racist pilot and I think that was, that was kind of overriding, so on behalf of our, but it lost up to two to one actually. But what upset me was one journal reporter and then it was picked up by the other Connecticut State Papers that, oh, the School Association voted down getting rid of Indian nicknames and that really wasn't, I think the majority of people there probably felt that it wasn't the best thing, isn't the right thing to do, but again, wanted to be sort of the local control aspect. And as I texted Erin, who was sitting in the gallery, thank God for the audio, it's just wrong type of thing.
All right, well, I attended, well, there's lots of cool breakout sessions to go to, but I chose to follow my passion, which was diversity and inclusion. I did a little bit of accessibility and universal design for learning. So I'm hoping Erin can, you know, maybe think about a board retreat, we can kind of get into that a little bit more and about our intentional allocation of resources and really, how do we meet the specific identifying needs of our kids and certainly how do we do that through our policies and things of that nature, so a future particular item for us.
I have just a few notes. So again, the thing about the conference is these breakout sessions, if you look through and there may be eight or 10 or a dozen breakout sessions at a given time, you pick the topic that interests you, as Paula said. So I went to a conference on, a breakout session on energy savings in the aisle, we have some conversations later. One of the, one of the key things was that even though you have a brand-new building that's energy efficient, making sure that you do the right things to make sure that it's staying energy efficient and that some things don't default and go back. Anyway, leveraging mental health, I went to that and the, a lot of the ideas that they talked about, I thought, hey, why would you do it? And that was kind of universal in these breakout sessions, is that we're doing a really great job on a lot of, a lot of fronts, but I got a couple of good things. The cybersecurity that Steve talked about, you've all heard about ransomware, where a municipality or a hospital or a school system gets hit with a virus and all your data is locked down and you basically have to pay a Bitcoin ransom in order to get your data back. It's hit at least a half a dozen schools in the last six months, in and around Wisconsin, or in and around the nation. And just because you have a backup, just a team that, you know, like to go back to normal the day after, several cases, schools decided that it was going to cost more to have IT professionals come in and rebuild all their servers, it would cost more than the ransom, so they paid the ransom to get their data back. Interesting fact is you can get insurance for protecting your data. At least one of these schools had that, part of that ransom cost covered by insurance. So I know from the corporate world, we get training all the time on, you know, passing a smell test and passing, don't click, don't click links. If you read the email and there's a link there and it doesn't make sense to you, you know, send it on to your IT professional or delete it. All it takes is one errant mouse click and you can wreak havoc on your data.
Well, tell them about airports really quick, Pete. That's something we all get involved on.
What's that?
For plugging in that airport.
Oh, so yeah, in cybersecurity, they call it juice jacket. I'm thinking, you know, I'm a kind of a tech savvy guy and I'm thinking, what is that? I have to Google it while we're sitting in the session. So when you travel, for those of us that travel a lot, there are convenience USB outlets on public buses and in public places and at the airport, they said, do not plug your charging port and your phone into a public USB outlet you don't know what's hooked to the other end. And just like when you plug your phone into your computer and starts talking to your computer and you're prompted on the screen, there's black software out there that could be extracting information from your phone, while you think that they're being nice and providing you with your charging port.
Always use your.
Choose your, yeah, use your plug-in, right, and plug it into the wall. I had not heard that before and I just, I just, I don't know, so I like finding things that just sound good. I went to a session on social media outreach and rights counter put it on, similar sized school district, and I was on our Facebook feed while they were talking about all the great things they were doing, like, you have to do that, you have to do that, you do this, do that. So a lot of great, a lot of great things that were on the door, but some things that I'll be following up with some of the staff on, things that we could maybe get a little better on. So great, great session, always a great opportunity, like Steve said, to network with people and meet people and get a chance to talk with folks and kind of get a different focus, especially those I guess that aren't in education on a daily basis and how sharp it is or focused on what's in our behavior.
Excellent. Well, thank you guys for taking the time to do that and we'll be working on getting the, getting ready for next year already. Next is educational options. This is something that we just do every year, that we put in the papers because of state law, we was in 2017, so this will be out there. We have a link already to our report cards, it's state legislature says we have to tell everybody where they can go to school or how they can get different options, just public schools, so that's what this is. And then there's a couple of things on here that, and Samantha, that aren't specifically on here, they don't take board action right now, but what I want to do is I want to go through those and one is a senior study hall. So what I'm going to do is I have some runoff too, Sam, so I'll get those out. Enter full screen and what we're going to do, this is an idea, I believe you've done something like this, I'm not asking for board approval, but if the board is like, man, this is not a really good thing, I'm not really sure if you want to do this, give us a month and then we'll think about it, we can hold off, but I think this is a good idea. We're running into a situation where we're starting to understand forcing people to do things doesn't really help. I think we learned that with ALC really helped that when you cut it to half day, they'd actually get more done because they know what's going on. So I'll pass this up, we're going to look at senior open campus and then also early graduation. Early graduation won't take in a pack until next year. Samantha?
So you know, our order tends to be open up for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, seniors who have a C or better and who don't have any behavior issues, it's gotten really well. You know, I want to put Gabby in the spot, I would say Gabby is eligible for that and she just didn't want to, but it's appropriate for her. But it's been a really good period for other kids. I had a couple of kids that got to my homeroom that were like, oh, I got to see mine this first quarter. I'm like, bitch, sorry, guys, see you better. And they all got to see you better. So it's definitely a good period and it's hard when you're seniors because there's not, you know, there's no state testing that they have to do. It's like, no, graduate. My homeroom used me a lot of feedback, so they feel like this is from them, just so you know, so I'm giving them good credit, like, hey, guys, thanks for your great idea, bring this to the board, so they were happy. Anyhow, bottom line, just, you know, as we continue to try to support kids for their needs in study halls, there's other things that I talked to Mr. Stata that I'd like to see made changes within departments and staffing to look at some different RTI and again, more support for kids who are struggle, or seniors. They've had every opportunity to get help and some of them just having to study halls like, eh, no, it's easier than taking in class. And when they have study hall in the library, it's not the most productive place, many of them. But Gabby closed eye, now you, but right, we'll see seniors, you know, closed eyes, they're like, hey, this is my break time. So I talked to my homeroom kids, they're like, no, it'd be great, you know, if I could just go home for that hour or whatever, if I had fourth hour study hall and I had fifth hour lunch, that'd be awesome. So this is a trial that I talked to Mr. Stata about, and again, it would be, you know, very same principal memorial time, end of the day, it would be for a senior, whether they have first hour study hall or fourth hour, it doesn't matter. I definitely would not want it to be just first or eighth hour, or I definitely would have several seniors upset and wanting to switch classes or, you know, we're not doing it. We're also not dropping classes, so this just happens, you know, I know Gabby, her examiner has first hour study hall. Gabby needs to be there. If I could share, then she tutors Wednesday mornings, other mornings, you know, could be a relaxation for her or she could take care of, you know, some things. Maybe she's like, hey, I need to go to the DMV or I need to go to the bank or whatever, just provide her opportunities to take care and get her lightened to be in the dug. So we did lessons, we'd like to start this next Monday, grades come off Thursday, I would give this to students in the next couple of days to again, have their parent permission that would allow them to leave our campus during the study hall and then they would have to get back. The rules on top are up there, where they need to sign off, obviously they can't be party. For example, if they had first hour study hall, they wouldn't be on time for a second hour class and then continue to have that C in every class.
Okay. How have you seen the junior and senior open lunch? Have you had any problems with that?
Very, very well. You know, and when I do have a kid who's late, you know, they're like, oh, yeah, I messed up or I, you know, is that many people in line or it's fine, it really is fine.
Questions I have, I guess at like, at the end of the trial, at the end of the year, just the feedback of, you know, any issues, any complaints by teachers perhaps of seeing maybe less work getting homework done, probably not with this group, but just it'd be nice to see some data on that. And then, do you look into any type of language that would let the parents know that while they're off the campus, that they're no longer, for that, or be out of, you know, our control or responsibility in case something would happen?
I, yeah, I could certainly add that statement because, you know, discussing mean that if a parent and student signs, say it's a royal time, they don't have to leave, you know, like for every first hour, you know, like all of a sudden a student was like, oh, you know, I really need to stay or I, I'm not going to go today, I just want to come and hang out with my friends or whatever, they wouldn't be forced to do that. So we have a sign up sheet, we would have a sign up sheet with Becky, I talked to her and Linda, and again, we'll keep track of, you know, how many kids are using it, that we have, you know, common building that way, checking in, checking out. Yes, I could certainly add a line of, you know, parents who should kind of leave our campus, we're going to be liable regardless of something, but I agree with you saying.
Not necessarily. I guess maybe just even if you weren't asking attorney, if there's just some specific thing, you know, I've handled some cases over the years and I claim where, where an accident happened, a lot of kids were off campus for whatever reason, appearing in school later and there was a question as to whether or not they were under our control or if they were, you know, on their own or not under our control at the time. So it might be good just to have some warning that may just be a attorney more than anything, but it might help.
We'll add that, get that to you guys tomorrow.
Excellent.
I have a question. Seniors who are targeting after their two freebies more than twice may lose privileges. Is that twice per quarter, per semester, per week?
Semester, semester is our policy for every class.
One other thing that Samantha mentioned, we're looking, the high school currently right now, most teachers, I don't know, eighth period, they teach six classes. We're trying to get that down to five so they have more opportunity to collaborate things.
Just for core.
Just for core. That's what we're looking at doing, and this could help out in some senses when we look at them also. at them out, so. There's a lot of nuances, I think the biggest thing is, and I think Gabby could have some good input here, but I think really the big thing is, is as we go farther down, and I really liked the comments I got from Liz, how she changed her program at ALC to a half day and then they do like building trades or they work in the morning and then come the second half, they're getting just as much if not more done because they feel more like their time is being utilized, so.
And that's, you know, I do want to just keep that separate because that whole number is competency based.
Right. Yeah, my whole point is that when people have motivation to get things done, they tend to get them done. Please, Gabby.
I'm all for this, I'm really excited about this. I have a first hour study hall and at night I take, two nights a week I take class at F T C, so I'm there for like four, nine thirty, twice a week. So having like first hours where I like come in late a couple of days, also get my work done, but like when I come in for study halls, I have study halls with my friends and then you get to talk. And so if I could like sit at my house and work on stuff and come later or, you know, I have homework I need to finish up in the morning, that would be nice. And then, like this room saying, one morning a week, I, I'm going to be tutoring here at F L C because all of this first hour of the week, so I won't have to come until second hour. So, and I've talked to a lot of people too that like, they agree this is a good thing and that obviously there's a lot of parameters, so it's not just like, oh, everybody gets to leave whenever they want to, like you have to work for it if you want to keep it. I think the, even leaving during homeworks to that would, I really like that we do that too. And then, because sometimes when you, like, like you're saying, you don't have to do testing or anything, so now there's three, like, three days a week where we don't have to read or we don't have like the leadership stuff that we're working on, so then you just sit there. Sometimes kids use it as an extra study hall, but if you already have one, then it's just sitting there, you know? So I feel like my time is being valued when you allow me to leave or work out other opportunities.
From an E P I standpoint, hours, the first seniors aren't really just, they don't hold to that, that's why we graduated earlier and stuff like that, just as long as when they, they graduate, they fulfill the requirements of the Board of Education. All right, and then the next one, which is pretty exciting. And this one, this we, this is definitely one that would bring back next month for board action because of having an impact next year, so Samantha, I'll pass this out if you want to. First one, early graduation.
Sure, so we, and I've been in force about this for probably the last five years and, you know, there's so many reasons not to, I mean, if I look at Gabby and, you know, college classes and other students who are in, you know, building trades, but every year there's one or two. And I had a student who wrote a paper on it and it just was kind of the same terms, I was thinking, you know what, maybe we need to look at this, we have one or two every year that, you know, high school is not for that student. They want to go on the road to work or they want to move on and then they're getting through early graduation. So Mrs. Gable and I talked and obviously she worked at Campbell's Court and worked at Finalak High School and actually she brought both of those policies and worked on them. These are very, very similar to Finalak's and Campbell's Courts, because she gave it to me in two kids, so it's in our Finalak. But basically it gives that, you know, for us, again, I have two kids, I have one student who's asking me about it next year and it's a student who's worked hard, freshman and sophomore year, you know, has credits, it's a student who, you know, is getting all of her stuff done, she just is really interested in high school that she really wants to get going in her life. So basically what they have done and that we would, you know, really admit it, is that the student would have a timeline of having to basically declare it to both the counselors and myself and that everything from kind of take a look on here that, you know, the counselor has verified, yep, you are going to need all the graduation requirements, you're going to be able to do this. They would submit and basically this application of saying, hey, this is why I want to do this, you know, what's the reasoning and what's my plan? And, you know, we can, we can tweak it out or anything, you know, it's on there, but basically, you know, for like a student who's, who's been asking me, you know, she was shared, this is, you know, my plan to work second semester and I want to basically earn money to go on to college, so I'm financially, you know, sound and so forth. Once in a while, maybe a student who wants to enter the military and have that opportunity. Early graduation is not for advanced students. It would be very, very silly in this day and age, all the other options of college classes and doing enrollment to even for a student who is taking advanced classes. But for a student, it's just high school is not for them and that they do work hard freshman and sophomore year, it would be an opportunity for them. Parents obviously have to okay it, they would have to have a plan, I would have to bring it to you guys before, you know, probably in the December board meeting is thoughts and then you would have to okay it and you would verify to the S and D, the student will graduate. When a student graduates that semester, they're not eligible, they're, they're done. They're basically, you know, you say, I don't want to be to say like not your student, but W I rules are, you can't be up for a spring sport, you cannot continue to grow up for a winter sport, you're done on that day. Most schools seem to allow kids to attend senior banquet and senior class trip and I see owners not to allow them and then they also are allowed to come back for graduation. And I certainly would want a student to have that option, but basically when our semester is done, you know, they're done. So I guess I'll just leave it at that, I'd like to bring it to you next board meeting and until you give an opportunity to ask any questions or thoughts or what things you would like me to look into, but I did share this with my staff and talked about options and they realized again that we are not talking twenty-five, thirty kids. We are talking, we think the most are being free in a school of our size, but probably more like one if that two were here. Again, it's not for a student who has struggled freshman and sophomore year, they won't be able to use the credit requirement for a semester of senior year. Questions, Samantha?
You did mention that you've been asked once or twice or three times every year and I was just wondering, how many would actually be eligible, whether they decided to do it or not? Is it a large volume of kids that are getting their credits in or don't matter?
Well, here's the hard, the thing I can tell you, that in the past three years, I've had two seniors from Finalak who have joined us their senior year and credit wise, they would be eligible if they were allowed to take the two English classes first semester, but we did not offer it. So they were really thrilled with that. The hard part is, you know, for a student, especially when they have advanced number of credits, is to say, hey, you know, second semester, you can't take more than one study hall, you know, you better have six credits. And so sometimes, you know, teachers have shared, okay, I've got a group of kids in my elective class who don't really want to be here and don't need the credit to graduate. The young lady who asked me and who wrote a paper this year, she would be eligible next year. So I do think that she would take advantage of this and she would put together a plan of why she wants to and bring it forward. She's been my one this year that is asked.
Sure, we could ask each other. And financially, it doesn't hurt us at all because it's a second, it's a third Friday and a second Friday, it's January, third Friday, September, second Friday, January. So all of our A D stuff is based on that, so it really has no impact financially of our student enrollment while we get A D. Or can grades?
You know, a bit of a traditionalist one, I just opened this here and I sent it earlier this afternoon, summer graduation and kind of, I, you know, I had a great high school experience, so I would wonder why anybody would ever want to leave even after the half degree, but, but when I read through the, all the background stuff and then I understood it and I accepted and it's very good coverage of all the possibilities that can happen.
I have enough you graduated early. He just, this is, that's not, he's not sporty, he's not a club guy, he got his stuff, planned it, he wants to get going, rock and roll, moving on, new opportunities. Plus, I think about two of our kids, you know, we start getting these Division One scholarships, they can graduate and start Madison this semester.
I mean, I think, you know, doing this, providing alternatives is very inclusive and for everybody's needs and so, I mean, that might experience, I enjoy high school as well, but that's, I don't know if there's any different situations that this would be helpful for.
And if the topic will be approved too, it's, it impacts on the culture and stuff, you know, if we're talking about twenty-five kids, all of a sudden moving on at semester, I feel a different vibe. My additional thought is that it'll be fine if you do more.
And if I can just, yeah, I think maybe that's why it took me a little while too, is I'm very traditional that way and I'm like, oh my gosh, I had an awesome high school, I will be. And, you know, the more stories and like the young lady this year is just really compelling and, you know, to think about it, like, yeah, it's none, it's not the same as when I was with them, everybody's a difference and everybody has a very, very different whole life and what works for them and what they have to get through and their goals and.
If you would want, just looking into the future for me, do you foresee this being another carrot dangling where students coming in freshman year are just going to hunker down and try to hammer out as much of high school as they can? And so it's been like five, six, seven years, do you do see, you know, five, 10, 15 students qualifying for graduation? Is that something you foresee?
I don't think so, only because, you know, think about it, like if someone told me again in high school, but you can't compete in a spring sport, ah, okay, there eliminates all those kids, you know, the kids who love, you know, building trades, you're not going to be a part of that, you know, so there's many of those kids who would probably say, you know, no. There are kids that, you know, socially, friends and everything else, like, you know, so I don't think so. I certainly could be wrong, you know, but I think also with the amount of different offerings that we have, the opportunities for you to take dual enrollments and have a lot of your college paid pay. Us?
Yes.
You know, it would be very, very silly for many of our kids to do that. I mean, it's just for your unique population and, you know, again, at Finalak, those numbers are not, you know, comparable because what they have with Campbell's Court is a little more and they only have to do it over here.
Thanks Samantha, that's the most terrific and compelling part to me. You look at even the kids that are in traditional sports, right now ice fishing's going on, trap shooting. If you're a wrestler and semester's done, you're done, we can't go to conferences, if you play basketball, you're done. We have pretty good participation and so I think there's, I think if we would have something like that, I think we'd really have to look at ourselves and think, why are these kids wanting to leave so much, what do we have? So I think that would really make us, instead of getting rid of this thing, would make us think of, we got to make it more valuable for them to want to do.
I was just going to say, I'm sure it's going to work because you know what classes they can't, can't take, but is it? I mean, so there's obviously a semester that they have to finish, I mean, so there's not a problem with, you know, you have to take this class before you can take that class, obviously.
No, I mean, the only thing that we have to allow, we're a little more flexible and it happens sometimes just because of scheduling is they have to take, is they have to take , you know, four credits of English that they have to take to their senior year typically. But we have some kids who take, you know, American Lit for a full credit and then they take the cap classes through year to year and, you know, so, I think so one, you know, like I said, the building trades, you know, things like that, there's more, you've got to take with one, you better take with two, you know, same, obviously if they're, they're a kid that's in year loan class for cap help or that, I just don't think those are the kids, you know?
And I applaud Samantha and her team for doing this and I think all of you said really well, people are so different and having the opportunity to take advantage of things in better off their life, but what's important is one, if it's two, whatever that is, I think it's, I think we're starting to really, I think we're starting to understand that more and more and create more opportunities. So read this over.
We'll bring it back to you next one.
Yeah, if you guys have any feedback or anything, let me know or you can email Samantha directly, let her know and then what we'll do is bring this back so that if any kid wants to start thinking about that, they'll have that ability. And then also, we'll add some wording about when students leave, they're no longer underneath the protection or no longer underneath the school's protection during those times, so FYI, we'll figure out some legalese put in there and then.
And the young lady who will go, I'll ask her if she would mind because I think.
Glad we waited. Or if she wants to come next, I think that'd be really cool for her to come and articulate. Yeah, that'd be cool. All right. You're rocking and rolling.
If they're open, do you have the parents, do they have to sign something for that too or? Or double?
Yes, for juniors, seniors don't have to do the best.
All right, as I figure out where my thing is here, all right, so now we have, anything else for, oh, I'll just give a really, to you again. We have flu season upon us and so just from Nurse Bridget, just so you know, there's correspondence, Dave and his team are working through everything we can to sanitize, but we did have, here's the numbers out today, 5K, seven, we've had, we have seven out, in kindergarten, we have seven out with, and one with influenza B, first grade, we have four out, second grade, eight out, two students with influenza A, third grade, six, one B, fourth grade, one positive for B, fifth grade, seven out. So you can see that, when you figure about a hundred kids per grade level, we are starting to see that, but just so you know, Bridget does a great job with Nurse Julie and Nurse Emily and with administrators in order to work with Dave to make sure that we clean and do everything we can. So if you hear this, flu season coming, also staff, administrators, have we had a problem with staff being sick too? In some senses, I mean, some of you yourselves? That's what, knock on some wood, so just so you know, it's on the radar, we're, we're doing the best we can and I think this facility, I think if we compared to other ones there, what we've done with H V A C and cleaning and surfaces, hopefully we're going to see even less and less. All right, any questions you have for administrators on their reports? Anything that you guys had that you want to share?
We might work a curve in the learning marks that have the instructional run, so at any point if you would like to come in on those given dates, you're welcome to do so, they will go on all day. We can fund it, show them to have the work of this convention. There's four dates between the fifth year.
All right, so here we go. That's it, I'm done with my part and I'll pull them.
Okay, next item, number 5K for new business, number one, discuss and consider setting the open enrollment pupil limits for 2021 school year.
All right, so I'm passing this up, this is the same thing that's out there. So. All right, so this is how I figure it, use this Dr. Richard Zimminger, this is what they used to have written. So if you see, I work with administrators and a lot of this has to do with, you asked about how many kids are per class and then how many kids we have in our district, how many open slots that we have, what does a district think for class size? So working with, I'll first, I'll talk with 4K about that. So 4K currently right now, we really don't know. And we've never shut down 4K and we've always had kids coming to 4K regardless if they have an I D or not, a lot of times it's a wash with Finalak, it's kind of like creating kids. So 4K, we really don't have a whole bunch of limits. I do have up there seven, but there's really, that never really hits or anything and it's always just, you never really know. And then the first one, the charter for traffic wait, that right there, we would, I would word it exactly, we'd probably put an amendment and just put those like stars up there, asterisks is that it's, there's open enrollment if spots are available that aren't taken from the school district with the caveat that if they open enrollment in traffic wait, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have transferred into our school district if they don't like the traffic wait. So we would put that in there, there's only, the max is 45 enrollment cats, that's all taken care of, but for our benefit, what I'll put on here, at the board's pleasure, is that it's, open enrollment is, it's up to 45 kids and open enrollment would be open in kindergarten if there's spaces available and then we would utilize state statutes and bylaws, which is siblings first and then moving on. And then, if we go in first or kindergarten through fifth grade, you'll see the number of sections, that's the same amount of teaching staff that we have now, including Mrs. Michaela Brown with, that's currently in Panama or North America. So you're looking at that, that fourth and fifth grade would have four sections. so you're looking at that, that fourth and fifth grade would have four sections and then kindergarten all the way through third grade would have five sections, if you look over here to the second column, you'll see the number of kids per section, so 5K first grade, um, really, it could get to 20, but we really wanna keep it at 20, that's ideally for those two younger grades, and then when we look at second grade, 22, third grade, 22, and then 25 for fourth and fifth, sometimes it might go a little bit above that, it might be below, but that's ideal, we use those numbers then to say, okay, that's what we have, here's a proposed number of sections, which would be then how many kids can we totally have and you'll see that's over here and then enrollment caps, okay, and then all I did is I took this right here and I transcribed it, I copied it, moved it down a year and pasted it, and that's what you'll see here, so you'll see 104 juniors, then it'll be 104 seniors, 110 freshman or 110, uh, night or juniors, 110 or sophomores, 110 seniors, so you can see that's all that is, so all this is, is the number of students times the number of sections, okay, minus what we have right here equals this, all right, so if we look over here currently right now, kindergarten, we'd have seven openings, okay, and then if we look at first grade, there's 11, second and third grade, we're at minus two and minus four, which means there'd be no openings, and how I figured this column here is I took the total number of students that we have, okay, minus this, okay, minus three, meaning that we saved three, so you'll see that these don't totally equal 110, so it's 13, that'd be 117, so we saved three for kids moving in, so actually in second and third grade, in second grade, we actually have one spot, but I, I would recommend that we don't allow open enrollment there, and then in third grade, we'd actually be over at one grade level, one grade level, we have 21, you mean first and second, first and second, I got, thank you, so, but now this is a predicate, we had like this past year, we have 99 FTE, meaning full students have moved here, so we have to see how that goes and we could have adding staff, but this is just out of the state statutes, we have to have an idea, so if we look at this, we, this would be the available spots, 13 seniors, seven juniors, two, two, Bass Allen's closed, it's after sixth grade, which is 15, smaller fifth grade class coming up, and then you can see fifth grade would be closed, fourth grade would have one, third grade would have six, so on and so forth, does that make sense, how that was figured? Administrators, talk with Samantha too, you'll see that we went up to 120, which extends that, that's gonna be coming with possibly, we're looking to raise revenue, getting more kids so that we can hire more core staff, teachers to reduce their caseload so that they could have instead of 30, 31, they might have 25, but they only have to teach five instead of six sections, which we've seen at Bass Allen, that schedule's helped them tremendously with talking and working on curriculum and, and raising achievement, so, um, the question that I would have here, um, is that, and I did instead of a third, I'll have to change that to three, I put a third, I put three instead, um, the question that I have here is, we have no special education so far that we've allowed in, the only thing that I would want is if we wanna look at, there's some students that come from 4K that come to 5K that have speech and language that aren't a lot, so we might wanna look at, do we wanna end up doing something like that, that, because you can limit it to programs and you can limit it to numbers, which we would then have to look at that, that could be something, um, and then I would also recommend that we include all district staff regardless of what, regardless of the student that they can have their enrollment here, so, um, those are just the questions that I have and this is the, what I propose, we just have to talk as far as special education throughout, currently we don't have any opening, we could stick with that, because we are pretty stretched in many different ways, so that could be, then, then any speech and language wouldn't be allowed because that's extra services that we would have to pay more than we currently are, I've talked about already. And all of these enrollment too, um, so what happens is, is that open enrollment starts in February, we have students currently right now that live in the district but moved out, they're on something called tuition waiver, so they have to fill out open enrollment in that time, they are guaranteed a spot if they fill out open enrollment, the only way a child will not, if they lived here and moved somewhere else that wouldn't have it on a spot here, is if there's special education and the IEP changes, which means that they have different services that we don't currently have space in, other than that, if you look at this, if any student that moves out, that lives somewhere else but was here, for the, they just have to fill out tuition waiver and then they have to fill out during open enrollment time, we currently have a family that moved, that hasn't filled out any tuition waiver, hasn't done yet, and then Michaela's been working with that, she's done a great job of making sure those things happen, but if they don't fill out tuition waiver and then they don't fill out open enrollment, there's times, sort of being very consistent and, and very streamlined or very, uh, making sure that we have, that we're fair and we're equitable, um, then if you look at open enrollment, state statute says siblings have the right, so you start, uh, open enrollment starts at, I believe this is the first or second week of February and it goes to, um, end of April, then what will happen is all those people that open enroll, we will look to see who they are and we'll say, hey, is this student, um, how many openings we have, and first we'll say, do you have any siblings that went to the school district, and if the answer is yes, then you would give preference, if the answer is no, then you go over here, if we have like four, like let's look at, uh, what grade is that, fourth grade, let's say we have six open enrollment applicants, two of them have siblings here, what we have to do is look at what our numbers are, but if they are what they are, then we do a lottery between those two, this right here, well, as the board passes it, our number of students can change throughout the year, which could open or close some of the caps, so this is where we started, then we can always look at our caps are over on the enrollment caps, so this also allows us throughout the year, that if we have like, for instance, let's look at seniors, let's say we got 16, or let's say we got 12 seniors move into the district, then it's only one, because we're taking those, we only end up at one because we have more FTE here, does that make sense? So this is a good start, but we know that enrollment always changes, so open enrollment actually, after initial open enrollment closes at the end of April, and actually after July 1st, you can do, um, special open enrollment and really, the only thing that holds them back is whatever we have set up here.
I have one question about specifically class size for like fourth and fifth, 25 students is kind of at the high end of what we're comfortable with or 25 students, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I would lobby for 24, but compromise to 25 because of, first of all, like the space that we have available, it, it's a lot and it, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like each time you add one child that it's a big deal, but again, the smaller class sizes make a huge difference and, um, given jumping from 22 to 25, adding 12 kids, more in grade level, technically shifts the dynamic, um, but on the flip side, you know, we would, if we would, when we had that class size and we came around with this at 24, now almost that with your sections, you know, you need to go up sections, now you've got a ton of open enrollment seats available, what's the likelihood that you're gonna fill that and then beyond that, and what's the impact at the middle school, so 25 is the number that we're comfortable with because it's not just about the class size of friendship, but then it's what is the capacity, I mean, you go up to Bass Allen.
Right.
And one question about siblings, you said we have to give preference with that. Are we required?
Yes.
Okay, so, requirement, probably more appropriate than probably required, okay.
But they're not required to get into this space, but they would have preference over other applicants. Oh, I see, I mean, if we, if we have a sibling trying to get into second grade, we open enroll, we're gonna look at where those numbers are, we could have people leave, we could have something different, could open up a little bit, but currently right now, if we had a family member open enroll in second grade, we would say no, we would deny.
What about an incoming 4K or kindergarten, they say they have one or two siblings already here, we can give a preference, but if there's no room, we can't, but you have, well, we can do that with staff, we choose, right?
Correct, that's, that other thing, so, that, that hasn't happened a lot and what we've been able to do, I mean, up until now, if we have a sibling coming in, there has been some times where they haven't been said no, except, we've had some siblings that are special education that wanted to roll, but we don't have room for that, so that's what the answer is, we've had families that say, okay, we'll send these two kids here and we'll keep our other kid in our own school, so, just kind of where it falls and we look at what our responsibility for our taxpayer money, we still wanna maintain our numbers, so like when we look at sixth grade, if we don't get more open enrollment in sixth grade, that's gonna be a reduction as we go forward, I think we probably will, um, but, you know, and I think Carrie Jo had, uh, had had a really good point, we built these for five sections, you still only have four, third, fourth, we're all running up to five, first, second, third grade and kindergarten, we have a little flexibility, but we're gonna be scratching for space and then on top of that, these groups then go up to the high school and the high school is originally built, what, 416, this would be 480, which means then we're gonna have to look at how we look at them, same thing with Bass Allen's, I mean, that's a pretty tight space too.
Well, we don't even have lockers.
Right, so.
We know, we should say that by going to 120, I have to purchase a locker.
Yeah, so if we need some more lockers, we might have to buy some more lockers.
We have no lockers, basically, there's like no, there's.
So there's some things we have to look at, we have some capacity with the lockers, so those are the things we have to look at, I would say probably, we're about a year or two out from, we gotta move here, and there are many spots we already have, but this fluctuates a lot during the year, so, I mean, we could at the beginning of next year, because of how life happens, have some openings at some places we've been thinking of before, so we will deny and then we'll look at where we have with enrollment because we still wanna maintain a certain level of students so that we can maintain those same revenue coming in, so, but this is, I think this is a good start, this is something that we use throughout the year, uh, because that, I mean, right now, these are, these may not be accurate, because this was last week, I mean, we might have one or two students that have left or have enrolled after semester, which I think we probably did, so we'll keep adjusting what we can, but the formula is total numbers of seats minus how many people we have in there, minus three, and that's how many open enrollment seats you have.
Can I just get a little clarification on the special education portion, so if there's a student who would like to enter 4K, they have an older sibling already in our district, the 4K student needs 30 minutes of speech a week, would they, would that make them ineligible currently?
Uh, in for 4K, no, but then they have to apply to 5K, yes.
Then they would be ineligible.
Correct.
So, okay.
We have not had, we are, what we're doing now is we're making every child apply in 5K, once you apply in 5K to get in, then you're, then you're.
But if a student, even if they have an older sibling already in the district, applies for 5K but needs 30 minutes of speech, they would be denied?
Correct, because of the capacity that's filled, or, or filled up, as a matter of fact, that for speech and language, I just bring that up because sometimes people will say, and I know that we had a conversation, that people say, well, it's just 30 minutes a week, well, we're already are going to a different company and it's to, to fill those needs and we already struggle right now with the needs of students that we have, so, yes. Now, another thing, if a parent would say, well, I'm gonna then take them out of special education, they come here, number one, there's an ethical thing there, but number two, if then after they come here, they get identified as being special education, then all of a sudden, it's like, well, we've changed your IP, your open enroll, which they didn't have one before, but how do you do it, and then we can deny those enrollments, another thing that Mike and Samantha do really well with Matt Bertram is, we have revoked, probably revoked two, I think, then I think also Carrie Jo at the elementary school, I think two or three this semester that says, you are truant, we documented you as truant, you no longer able to come to the school district.
And we also get some back.
And we get some back, because they reapply and then, yeah, so it's a.
No, that, that rolls out.
So they roll out.
They, they.
So they have to come back here, yeah. So I would recommend that we have, that, that the board adopts this and more so it's that formula and then, um, that we close it for all special education, um, the traffic wait has the openings and if the traffic wait student comes in that they have the capacity to handle, they can handle them, but they, that child will not have the ability to move into another place in the district if that's what they chose, they go to the traffic wait, if they're not in the traffic wait, then they would go back to their own district and we did that last year, and I feel comfortable with, are we at 4K, kids don't really know what's going on, a lot of 4K, they end up having IP's they don't know, and, um, we're looking at later on, Chris, along with the two, uh, school psychologists, Carrie Jo and myself, we've been meeting to look at what early childhood looks like, I might be coming to you guys in the next couple months saying that we really wanna look at the district school and if we wanna be more involved in that role, what that looks like, because back in the day, we used to have early childhood and we, and currently we have our partner system, but we had daycares, we had divine savior, we had, that, we had some really good, or good partnerships that people already established with preschools and that's kind of why you bridge that gap, that's kind of going a little bit, so, those are things we're looking at in the future that we'll bring to you too, that could have an impact. So right now, this is what the recommendation is, students would have to apply to get into 5K, if their learning changes and they need more additional supports while they're in our district, we have the ability to then say, hey, we can't, your, your things have changed, we can't service you anymore, but on the flip side too, if we have a student, they've been here, they moved, they fill up a, and they keep the same services they needed before, they fill out tuition waivers, then open enrollment, they'll stay here. And just because a sibling wouldn't get in in 5K, that doesn't mean they wouldn't get in the first grade, if the numbers are different, it's kind of goes on. And I articulated that pretty well.
And it's, we have had things in the past where they've been, a sibling maybe they're listening to a section available for them, you're one, then they reapply, one, there's no seats available, and gotten in, we do have families that are split between our district and another district, um, and they, they just keep their line or looking, inquiring, finding out that other siblings are available, so, that's pretty common, one other thing I was gonna mention with your question, Sean, about the speech and language only, a lot of times, um, kids are coming into us kindergarten without an IP or maybe they're speech only and a lot of times there's, there's maybe more going on, but because of developmental, you know, just that we train, we don't typically, and a lot of times our schools don't want to identify a sibling prior to that, so, um, what we've found in Christmas because there are several students that come in as speech and language only as an IP, but we're adding academic minutes for reading, for writing, for math, for all kinds of other areas, wanting to get to us, so, um, hearing on that side is caution, even though it sounds like, well, they just gave X number of minutes of speech, generally transfers into a lot more than that when they're actually in the school side. Trying to conserve special education if they're always that they need their district, it's not that we don't care about the others, but, but if you have a home district, we're gonna serve there, so, they may really come around quickly and then we're looking at hiring for staff and adding more services, and that takes away from those who reside in transition.
Now, in the future, with our staffing that we have, our goal is if we get better at, at tier one or universal instruction, um, we get better at those accommodations and modifications earlier, then we start to see, just like in our EL population, we're seeing kids, you know, test out of their access test and not EDL services, and we're seeing that a little bit, we're, we're seeing a reduction in our special education population, and time this could change a little bit, I mean, because there are some students possibly that change the instruction, they could probably maybe do well in some areas, so, but speech and language is one of them for sure, that we're seeing a lot of students at the secondary level that probably shouldn't have speech and language if we were doing other things and shouldn't be graduated out, and so there's other nuances and that, that's why this is a great thing to talk about, next year, things could change.
All right, then I will entertain a motion that we, uh, accept the recommendation for enrollments for 2021 school year. And I'll second that. Any further questions in discussion? Take that, vote for one please.
Yes.
Chisen.
Yes.
K, yes.
Yes.
Public, yes.
And, uh, motion passes unanimously. Item number two on our new business, discuss and consider moving to May, board education meeting to Monday, May 11th, we do this every year, so that we are meeting ahead of the May 15th, uh, contract requirement.
Yep, and what I would say too is, if we feel, um, and at that time, I don't know for certain, don't know what human resources is gonna be like, but that is, I would be, if we do this, I'd like, I'd recommend them to do this now, that way we have that meeting, um, but if we needed to have one on the fourth, Monday, I don't believe it's Memorial Day this time, we still could have that, I think we could probably in the short term, I'll get this done, and then June would just be more stuff, so, I, I would, I would still hold off the idea that if we saw that we had a lot to do, uh, or maybe that could even be that Monday, we could start looking at, the fourth Monday of May may be a retreat or maybe something that's, just with the board to build some capacity or something, so, I.
Fourth Monday of May is Memorial Day this year.
All right, so we won't have it then, we could have it the third, but that'd be right afterwards, so, this is a good, I think, and then I think from a business standpoint, if we have checks that have to go out, they'll go out, but you'll just have more approved checks in June, and you'll have quite a few less because it'd be a short term, because the second Monday is for yearly meeting.
All right.
I'll make the motion, change the meeting to May 11th.
All right, move in second, any further questions? Session, vote for one please.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Chisen.
Yes. Item number three, discuss and consider graduation date for class of 2021.
And I apologize first, I didn't get you that survey that I said I went before, got sent out. So with Samantha sent out a survey, could you tell them the feedback that you got from them?
Oh, sure, and I think we discussed the survey last time, so I know they went on. So, and I sent a copy to you.
Right, I didn't send it to the board, the board wanted it, I'm just apologizing for not getting it.
Okay, so I have one more response. So as of right now, I have 20 people who have indicated they would prefer Sunday, June 6th at 1:00 PM. I have nine people who shared they would like Sunday, Memorial Day at 1:00 PM. And then I have these people who just added their own comment, which again, they're not high numbers, but you know, one that indicated a weeknight after Memorial Day at 6:00 PM, one that indicated Sunday at 1:00, May 23rd, another one that said just Sunday, May 23rd, and another one that said May 22nd or 23rd or a weeknight before Memorial Day weekend. So those are my responses for 33 people and out of 33, 20 was on the state of June 6th at 1:00 PM.
I would recommend that it's June 6th, that's the first Sunday in June, I think that would stay true to what we're doing. The only caveat from that would be a school is over on the fourth, third to the fourth, so Samantha and her team would just have to decide, will the seniors be going for that week before and just come back to practice on Friday or go all the way there and that's something that you can decide with your staff. Although we've done that before where they've been going for weeks to come back. But I would say by going June 6th, Sunday, you know, two thirds said that that's what they'd like, we took the time to fill it out. Staff, I mean, this is, there isn't all that weekend, that weekend, that's the next weekend, I believe it, even if it was, it doesn't matter. But this, I mean, staff, this is just after school ends, so I think this is the better option, Memorial Day weekend on a Sunday is pretty ask, the ask to be tweaked. So based on Samantha's results, kind of I think what I heard from the board, I think I'd recommend Sunday, June 6th, 1:00 PM. Would you concur? This will go for you?
Yeah, I know we would have to just discuss, you know, when we do practice, because obviously the last day of school would not be my goal, but early release day, everything else, crazy to practice, probably we practice, we inquire if that works, because again, like the third and the fourth or whatever that day is, that we, it's self-marketing, we're not here for now, the other kids, so we can certainly work that out. You know, and I have no control over, yeah, we can leave right after school is out or we're going to staff, so we're not there, I'm not, it is, you know, it's very unique year, so. You'll have the option to share.
Any other questions from the board in the office?
No, I was happy to see that the survey limited it yet, but that seems to validate the Sunday 1 o'clock thing as being important and, which was important to me and I think kind of validates what we've been doing the last 20 plus years, so. I was fine with either weekend as long as it was Sunday 1 o'clock or time would change the assessment, Sunday I can move. So I'll make the motion to set graduation for 2021 for June 6th, 1 o'clock.
I'll second. Okay, moving to second and to have graduation established since June 6th. Volco, please.
Sack.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Chizin.
Yes.
Stuckey, yes.
Yes.
Nanus, June 6th, 2021. That brings us to the end of the new business section. The next item is item L, recommendation to both move to close session to discuss staff compensation ideas under state statutes 19.85, 71 subrings, 6. So, my motion to the board to move to close session to bring out those sessions. I'll second. Moving to move to close session, a brief pause.